We're just waiting for the on-air button.
There it is.
There we go. Good evening, Rolling Meadows. This is the committee, the whole meeting, for January 16th, 2018. First up is the billboard question. Mr. Crumstock, would you lead the introduction, please?
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. Obviously, we've talked about 3975 Algonquin Road in the past billboard. Tonight, Chris Lupo and Jim Perry from Lamar Real Estate will actually do another presentation. The current owner is Luxury Automotive Import Auto. And Mr. Kim and the entire families here are going to be asked to help on homework soon, in a little bit, too. But they have a small PowerPoint to talk about the billboard. And again, it would need some additional changes in zoning to allow them to put this billboard in place. But again, we believe that it's an opportunity for the city council to discuss this, to give you really a presentation from Lamar Billboard. This is completely different from the last time Oxford was here, when they were going to put up a billboard, "Give Us A Park," which then we would have been maintaining a park at that point in time. Pretty much the same understanding for the billboard is in front of you. The one thing that was passed out at everybody's place and also emailed to the city council is new rendering. The rendering, that's actually in the pack, it was the first one that made the billboard look larger and a lot than before. But with that, that's really the main subjects that Mr. Lupo and Mr. Perry will be talking about. But overall, the action items before you is, with the city council, one additional information before proceeding. Would you like staff to continue working with Lamar and Mr. Kim? And then if approved, then it does need to go to Planning and Zoning Commission for the variances that are needed for this project. With that, I ask for Mr. Lupo, who's somewhere behind me, to come up and actually just do this quick presentation.
Thank you for coming forward tonight. Appreciate it.
Thanks for having us. I appreciate it. Lamar Advertising is a billboard company. We have experience working in the village already. We have a billboard sign on village-owned property, of which we provide advertising for the village already. Right now, actually, we're running a recycle program for your Christmas lights, so that the constituents and the village know where to come and recycle their lights, and then not just discard them in the garbage can. That's just one promotion we have on there for the city. I believe within the next week or two, I'll be contacted by -- I'm sorry, I can't recall her name.
Laurie.
Yes. And thank you. And we'll have some new copy going up in real short order for a March promotion that you guys are having in March, obviously. So with that said, we're looking at the property of 3975 Algonquin Road. This is the southwest corner of Route 53 and Algonquin Road. It's the site of a location that used to house a car wash, and then it was abandoned. I'm guessing somewhere probably in the area of about over 10 years of no use. And the new property owner, Mr. Kim, recently, probably within the last five years, had put in a car dealership. And so we were contacted by Mr. Kim as a potential location here, to see if we had any interest. And we've been working with him accordingly. The site is right there on the, again, southwest corner. This survey here, the whole purpose of this survey was really just to show where the sign is in relation to, I know there was a question with regards to the sewer interceptor that runs through the property. And if you, I'll have to walk over there. If you look real closely, there's two lines and a main line right here. This is the sewer interceptor that goes through, runs north and south, right underneath the building. Our foundation for the sign is going to be way over here. Our foundation for the sign would be all over here. It's 50-plus feet away from the interceptor sewer. We did contact the water reclamation district to make sure that we had adequate spacing away from them. And with that said, they said you only needed to be 10 feet away from their easement. So we're satisfying that more, you know, five times over. This here is just a representation. Again, it's just an estimate rendering for illustration purposes only. We realize that the sign is bigger than it would look normal, especially when you're looking at it from Route 53. And the angle of that would also be turned toward Route 53, so the back end or the left side there would actually be pulled forward, angled toward the road. We are also, we adhere to the brightness guidelines from Dr. Ian Lewin, who's a lighting professional at Lighting Science Institute in Scottsdale, Arizona. He had done a light study for digital signs back in 2008. And basically, his synopsis is saying that light produced by the digital billboard should not exceed .3-foot candles over ambient light. So light produced by the digital sign should not exceed those levels as measured. And now our sign is 14 by 48 bulletin, so that's the one that's highlighted in the bottom, that's measured from 250 feet back. This diagram here, if you look, there's, let me get the --
Turn it back, huh? I turned it.
Thanks. Measurements here is 200, 400. 600 feet away. So 200 feet away, we're at .07-foot candles. Over here, .24-foot candles. And as you continue going further out to 400, .08, and .02. So we're seven tenths, or 7% of what's actually allowed for foot candles above ambient light. Again, the, Dr. Lewin suggested, again, .3-foot candles over ambient light as measured at 250 feet. At 200 feet, which is closer to the sign, we're only at .24 along the road and by the building, .07. So it's minuscule light. With regards to traffic analysis, studies conclude that traffic accidents are caused by drivers being distracted by things within the car itself or actions that are performed while driving. And 80% of these crashes are caused by driver inattention and distractions within these three seconds of the crash. These here, based on the traffic analysis study, are the top 10 distractions listed and cited by the NHTSA. Ours follows: reaching for something, we got dialing a phone, texting, eating, drinking, interacting with passengers, daydreaming. Billboard signs aren't even in the conversation. With regards to the sign, we also put up, as well, we talked about putting up advertising pro bono for the village. We also use the sign with the state and federal governments to place amber alerts for missing children and silver alerts.
Any further, because now we'll open up for clarification questions.
Sure.
And I just have to make one correction. We are a city.
I'm sorry, a city. My fault.
Does any alderman wish to have any questions for clarification questions only of the, what was presented tonight? Mr. Baner.
Thank you. I'm fairly certain 2014 was the last time this came in front of us. And I guess my only question is for tonight's discussion, has any change, has anything changed in terms of the size? That was, that was one of the big issues last time.
Jim Perry from our office was in the, during those presentations. He's here today. He can attest that there hasn't been any change with regards to the size of the sign. The biggest change is that we no longer have the park. There's going to be no liability for the, you know, donating a park to the city, the maintenance on the park for the city, any liability for the city. So those are completely the biggest changes, as well as now the property is owned by Mr. Kim, a businessman in the community.
All right. Thank you.
Any other? Mr. Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So can you clarify, so this is, how big is each side going to be? What's the dimensions?
14 by 48.
Okay. How does that, how does that compare with our current code? Are we, is that bigger than our code?
That's why it has to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Can you refresh me, Barry, of what our current code is?
I think Public Works Director Fred Vogt might have that, but I do not remember that on the top of my head.
Fred's coming up to the microphone right now.
I think it's 200 feet.
The gross area is 200 feet, in gross area per side, which I wrote it. But there's some more stuff in there that Fred probably knows, too.
Okay.
Thank you. Going back to the 2013 Plan Commission summary, the variation was requested for excess of 200 square feet. So 200 is what the, is allowed in the C2 district.
So how many square feet is this sign, then? 14 by 48? I got 772. Did I add it wrong?
672.
Okay. All right. That's substantially larger than what we have. Does anybody else have a sign along there that's of similar size? Barry, would you know that?
No, I would make the comment, it's very similar to the one that we have on Winnetka, which Lamar actually owns. Most of those billboards in that area are about the same. And on the top of my head, I think the green sign one that we did on Euclid is also about that same dimensions.
Those are in the overlay district, and we would have, we could certainly go through the permits and get you the comparables in terms of the size.
Okay, that's fine. So the other question, Fred, so how does this, does this affect any of our overlay districts that we've always talked about in the past?
This is not in the overlay district. This is simply C2 zoning and not in the overlay district.
The overlay district is specifically off of that area over here. We never put anything on Algonquin Road.
How far does it, the overlay go, going south?
It stops right at Euclid.
It's for the manufacturing and the transitional districts.
I believe, I'm sorry. It starts at Euclid and then goes north to an area, I believe, south of Winnetka.
Okay.
And then we have another overlay district on the east side that was from Euclid to, I think, several hundred feet north of that.
Okay. I have some other questions, but they're not about, I'll get to them later on, we'll go to the next level. Thank you.
Any other questions regarding to clarification? We had no one in on the signing sheet, so this is time to open it up for discussion on the item. Who would like to start first? Or Mr. Baner?
Thank you. I want to say this is maybe the third time we've talked about this, and my feelings haven't changed. I would still not be in support of this. Thanks.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. Gill?
A couple of questions. First, what are some of the benefits or advantages to the city for having this or proposing this idea? Can anybody help me understand that?
Mr. Crumstock, who do you want to come answer that?
I can start with it. So the only benefit for the city of Rolling Meadows is obviously additional promotional items. This is not an item that was brought up by the city, per se. And again, the city has actually looked at this property in the past to see if we even wanted to do anything on it. So again, just some promotional. There's really not that much out of there, because we have an annual fee that they pay for the sign itself. It's really for Mr. Kim and Luxury Imports Auto, for additional revenue for them, additional, if you want to say, advertising for them, too, for anybody driving by that area, Algonquin Road or off of 53. So when you look at the benefits for the city, it's limited to really just those annual fees and additional promotional items on a larger billboard for people on 53.
Mr. Gall?
Thank you.
Any questions?
For now, yes.
Any further discussion? Mr. Cannon?
So Barry, maybe you could help me with this. So let's just assume we approve this. So between that sign and all the signs that are up farther north, how many other signs would be allowed to be fit into that space? Do you have any idea? I know I'm kind of hitting you with a hard one, but I just, but I mean, right now, they have to go at 700 feet apart in the overlay district? Is it 700 feet?
No. It's 500 feet from both of those overlays. That's why when Arlington Park came to us, it was actually just outside of our overlay area. So in our overlay area, I think one or two potentially. But this Algonquin Road, that would be the first one that we've heard that people even want to use property by the 53.
Well, I guess I just wondered if we approved this, if other people will come out and say, hey, if I can make, you know, maybe we can make revenue off of our property also. There's a couple of properties I can think of right off the top of my head.
And I can think of one on Gulf Road that would probably be knocking on our door to ask the same thing.
And I could think of one on Kirchhoff, too. So I just, it's a concern of mine. I don't know, I don't know how, that doesn't mean we should vote for this or not vote for it, but it's a concern that we will just have a whole wall of signs.
And that's why we put the overlay over that one section, which was the main area that we were getting a lot of calls and requests for.
Okay. I guess a couple of concerns. If we go ahead and approve this, a couple of caveats I would like to have attached to this in writing is, how much advertising are we going to get actually? So in case Mr. Kim decides that he wants to start a business somewhere else and leave us, that the new owner would assure us that we would still get access to the sign so many times a week or whatever we do right now?
The agreement would be between city and Lamar Billboard itself.
Okay. But I'd like that in writing.
I think Chris heard that pretty loud.
Okay. Right now, thank you.
Any further discussion, Hans? So I guess at this stage to move forward, is there any other information that anyone wants that was not discussed tonight? Okay. Does, seeing none, okay. I guess we'll ask for a straw vote. Does the staff, should staff continue to work with Lamar and Mr. Kim on the project? Those in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Those opposed?
Can I abstain for now?
Two. So it's five, four, and two opposed. So right now, what we're looking at, Mr. Crumstock, is for staff to continue to work with them and then bring the project back to us.
It would hopefully be, and again, I asked for the straw vote, also Lamar Billboard and Mr. Kim work with the city and also bring it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission before it actually comes back, so Lamar has some homework to do.
Well, if they continue to work with you, then they need to bring it back to us before it gets to them, or?
We're just trying to say, at this point, if we just, once we're done dealing with them, we'd like to keep it on the movement with the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay. So then I guess the next question is, after staff gets done with it, then? Sorry, go ahead.
I was just asking, or?
Okay. If you have a question, that's fine. But you can proceed on to the Planning and Zoning Commission, because it will come back to us again.
As an ordinance.
So a straw vote for it, to be able to move forward to planning and zoning. Those in favor?
What did you just vote for?
I just understood five, and then against. Okay. So you have direction. Just wanted to make sure that we were clarified.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Mr. Crumstock, council chambers?
It's actually Alderman Cannon who will be running this presentation.
As you know, we were here a number of weeks ago with just our initial thoughts. In the meantime, we reached out to Deana Chuzak from, sorry, I just goof up names all the time. Deana's a professional who's worked with a number of cities in the area to help them with a similar program of remodeling spaces, especially city hall chambers. So I think this week, I should say last week, Lori and I had the chance to meet with her, and we've kind of finalized some ideas to bring forth to you. Our goal tonight would be to get your buy-in and move to the next level. A lot of the things that we're talking about are on the state contracts. We don't have to worry about bidding and all that. The prices are kind of locked in, so we can give you some numbers. The good news is, we can do a lot of the things we talk about for less than the budget we asked for. And with that, Lori's going to pass some information out to you, so you get an idea of a couple of things we're thinking about.
Recap of some of the modular components as shown in the village and wheeling.
So even though I'm going to kind of lead the discussion, Deana's here to help if there's any questions that I can't answer, or Lori's here. They've been wonderful putting us all together. They've done a great job getting us to this point.
And then here's.
Print, a print of what the new, the new dais would look like.
The dais and the staff desk.
Staff desk. So with that in mind, I'm kind of excited to show you what Deana's come up with. She kind of made us think about things in a whole different picture. Many of us don't think about that space, because we come here three or four times a month, sometimes more, and it's just a place we come to. But when you think about it, this is really the people's space, and it's a space that we present to customers who might be wanting to move into businesses here and things of that nature. And I think all of us can agree that we need to do something to the room to make it look more professional at minimum. I think Deana's come up with some very rational ideas that are within a cost range that we can handle. We can accomplish a lot of the things we're going to present tonight, probably by the end of summer, if we wanted to move that quickly. We're prepared to do that. So with that, I would just ask you to look briefly at the plan, so you can see the one desk that we, our dais that we sit at, that has the angles on it similar to what we'd use right now. And then you can see the concept we have for all the staff. So we would propose we put the staff all on one side as opposed to splitting it. So here's where I'd like you to start thinking differently than what we've been doing right now. As opposed to just remodeling what we have up there, the proposal we have would ask you to think about changing the whole room. And here's where we're going to go. This would be the center of the space going forward. This is where Mr. Pranam would step, facing this way. That, this is our concept that we have. To make you think about one of the reasons why we decided to do this, if we leave it up there and we remodel it at any level, we need to make it ADA compliant. It's really, it's not impossible, but it's extremely difficult to accomplish that without going through a lot of hoops. We've investigated kind of redoing what we have right now. Believe it or not, we actually can buy new furniture for not much more and have the flexibility of changing things because they're modular. The benefit of modular, as we all change and the city changes as time goes on, modular gives you the idea of pulling parts apart and putting new parts in, making it bigger, longer, whatever we want to do. But it gives us a lot more flexibility. When you do hard goods like we have up there, the problem is, that's what you have forever. They don't change. You have to rip it all apart to get it changed. So this is where the center of the new room, and this would be the middle of the, this would be the middle of the building, right here, or middle of this, our dais going forward. So we would, we would offer that we would put the dais up off the floor, just like it is over there, like eight inches to 10 inches, and then proceed from there. We would have large TV monitors, one back over there, one over here, and one, we would move that large one there into the middle of the room. Obviously, whatever plan we do, these are going away. Okay? This is all, again, just in the first, the first phase of it. As we talked before, all the walls would be redecorated, going to get rid of the chair rail, try to get a continuity in the sense that we got, I think Lori and I counted, there's five different woods in here, different colors. So we just kind of would try to make it closer to be all one, or at least not five of them, anyhow, maybe one or two. Chief has suggested that we get rid of some of the windows from a security standpoint, and we've relied on him. He's been through one of these programs over in Algro Village, so he has a lot of knowledge. And plus, he's the only guy in the room that can protect us if we run into big trouble. And he's the only guy to get something on his belt that can protect us all. I'd like him to see everything. So I think the new setup, so as you stand here, the design would be similar to what we have now from just a general space. You can see it on the plan, what we have laid out. The big difference is, we would have all the staff members lined up against that wall over there, starting here and going to the back. So they'd probably go back to somewhere around where Ginny or Laura's sign is up there, somewhere in that area. I don't, we'll lay all this out exactly if you guys give us the permission to go forward. But at this point, we just kind of wanted to get to general concept out there and see how you feel about it. Okay, a couple of other parts of this. The audiovisual doesn't have to change a lot right now. If we do this, Justin has assured us that for a relatively small amount of money, we should be able to move the cameras around and make them work functionally in the same way. Some of us would like to get rid of that closet, because all it does is hold junk. So we might make a small presentation over area over there potentially, or in the back, where people can have plans, can put their plans up setting there until their presentation. So if the general public wanted to come in and look at them, they could do that also. It's just that we haven't finalized that, but it's an idea. We've also, so let's go back to the top. So if we, the desks, both desks and a new podium would get us, we can do all of it for under $25,000 installed. All the products we're talking about, Deana picked up, that's on the state contract right now. So it's already been bid out, and we got a very, very good price on it. We think we can do all that work for less than $25,000. Not a lot less, but under 25. In conjunction with that, now, the other, we do have an option if we wanted to get, I wanted to just show you, when you start doing interior design work, as Deana would tell all of us, there's choices you have for colors and finishes. So these are all laminates. If we wanted to do wood, we can do that, but it's about $15,000 more, that would be actual wood veneer. The other part of this is, we can include this, remember, we asked for $50,000. So we're at 25 right now. Here's the carpet sample, this is the carpet sample we're thinking about using. This is what they're using upstairs right now. They just installed it, I believe, this week, right? Yeah, so it would be the same thing.
It's the same as administration itself.
So we think we can do this for less than $10,000 for the whole room. So now we're at about $35,000. Now, obviously, we have some cost involved with building a new, a new platform for the dais. Fred's guys think that they can do the work of taking the windows out, putting new studs in and drywalling it, repainting everything. We just don't know, their time schedule is a bit difficult, because obviously, with snow and stuff, that's their number one priority. But they, they're working on a museum now. This would be their next project. So we think we could probably get a lot of the work done by middle spring, you know, redoing everything. Let's see. So I think I have a lot of it covered. Did I cover all of it? Is there anything I'm missing, besides keeping a drop in my paper? Okay. So you guys get a general idea of what we're doing, guys and girls, excuse me. Anybody have questions?
Questions for clarification, I guess. Mine is that, first off, is that when we were discussing this last time, I thought we were talking about $10,000 in the beginning.
I thought, yeah, we were, and then we took a straw vote, up to $50,000.
I just think this is just, well, I'll save my comments after.
Okay.
Go ahead. Who wants clarification?
So just, so 25 and 10, you're just saying $35,000 max?
Well, no, I'm not saying that. I'm saying- I'm saying that's $35,000. And, you know, we don't know what the other thing is going to cost because we haven't costed them out. You know, one of the things we didn't want to... We don't want to get too far ahead of the horses here and start doing a lot of work till we get general buy-in. If you guys agree that we want to go forward with this, we will get all those numbers locked down and present them to you shortly. But we just... You know, some of these things, because our own staff's going to do it, it's a little harder to get... You know, we have to go out and figure out how much wood we need and who's going to do the build-out and that. And we know... So, I mean, in the future, like we told you before, if we decide to do this, we're going to have to do it in phases because there's still things we need to do. We still need to do stuff with the draperies. The ceiling needs to be redone. I mean, lighting in here is pretty poor. Most people would come in here and say that this is ancient lighting because it's about 40 years old. A lot of the lighting could be redone in a lot more professional look. I don't know how much that'll cost. I have no idea, but that's another phase down the line. We're not worried about that right now.
Okay.
Mr. Boudin.
What do you plan on doing with those windows?
We would probably either put black up stuff, black off of some kind of block right now, you know, or put some kind of shade up, some minimal cost, just to get through. Because we realize they can't have light coming through while we have a meeting. Eventually, Nick, the idea would be to replace the draperies. But as you know, draperies can get very expensive, and we don't know what the best solution is for it yet because we haven't already looked into it.
Mr. Boudin? Any further questions? Mr. Banjo?
Thank you. One of my questions, you're talking modular, flexible, but does that also equal movable? Because I know sometimes we...
Absolutely.
Okay. We haul things in here for blood drives, voting booths, et cetera.
Absolutely. That's the good thing about it, Rod, is you can do a lot of different things with it. You're not locked into one section and you can't move it forever. That's the beauty of modular furniture, no matter where you have it.
Okay. So it can literally be picked up, moved to one side if we're going to do something in here. I guess another question of mine, you did mention there's... So there's other phases to this. Is this the first step? In other words, should we save the ceiling to the last because it'll be easier to do it last? Or would it be... Would it make more sense to redo everything at once? You know what I'm saying?
Well, in a perfect world, it'd be like remodeling your house. You do two walls and leave two of them blank. I mean, ideally, we'd be able to do it all. But, I mean, the other thing is we do have some restraints about money.
Yeah.
I mean, none of us want to spend any more money than we have to. But we also need to get a newer look here. We need to get more professional looking. When you see what other towns have, we always compare ourselves to other towns. We really look like we're outside of the game.
Are there questions for clarification?
So I guess what I would ask tonight is to get strong kind of a straw vote to see if you're willing to support this going forward. If not, we'll stop it in its tracks right now. But we need to have your support to move on.
Well, my comment to this is, and I stated at the last meeting, that if you... I feel starting out at $10,000 simply to spruce it up was fine, but be spending this type of money with other things that we have out, coming out on the table, I don't support that. Just putting it out there. This is much more expensive than what we were discussing the first time.
Alderman Cannon, can you walk me through it again at a high level? $35,000 gives us a relocated dais, relocated positioning for the staff.
Right. All new desks for them, also flooring.
So flooring and podium.
Right.
No demolition of the closet yet?
Again, those are fair questions.
Yeah.
We don't have numbers in that because I don't know how... You know, we'll have to figure out how finance would want us to budget that relative to what we're asking for because I don't know how we do that internally.
Okay.
Because we'd be using our own employees to do all of that. We've always... We've already talked to Fred. He thinks his guys can handle it, but it's going to... He just can't promise us a timeline because other things that are more important than this. But he can do pieces of it at a time, and he thinks he can accomplish most of it by summer.
Okay.
But he can't give me a date, and I'm not trying to lock him down on a date either.
Understood. So then, having addressed those components, that leaves a couple of things like windows, maybe ultimately sealing the exterior windows and then sealing the interior glass windows.
Well, our goal is, Mr. Gallagher, is to take a couple... Chief has recommended from a safety standpoint to take some of the windows out. Now, that's changed a little bit, but out of those four big ones, a couple of them will be gone for sure. That one, there's no need for because no one uses the one over there.
Okay.
So at least three of them will be gone as you see them right now, if not more.
Got it. Because what I'm trying to do is wrap my head around the remaining punch list, so I can kind of quantify that in terms of a price value and see where we are from $35,000 to what we're initially addressing, to what the projected cost might be to then move further down the punch list, to see if we stay at $50,000 or if we're going to be at like $85,000.
Well, I think for the first phase, we will stay under the 50.
Sure.
I just... It depends. You know, I have no idea what a new ceiling will cost because we don't... You know, I just don't know.
And video equipment relocation.
That is not as major as you think because we talked to Justin about that. You know, he has a pretty good handle. It's going to cost something. I don't mean to sound like it's not going to cost anything.
Right.
But I don't... You're not talking 20 or 30,000 or something like that. I mean, we have relatively new equipment. He gets a new budget for audiovisual every five years, so he's three and a half years into this equipment. So a year and a half from now, he'll be asking for new equipment whether we move it or not.
Sure.
All right?
Thank you.
My other question of clarification is what could we do for just $10,000 if we just did that this year?
Again, not knowing how we would do it... I mean, obviously, my first impression is to get rid of the wall back there. And I don't know how much... I just don't know how much from a budget standpoint, Mr. Mayor, how much that costs. I'd have to talk to finance to find out how that would be costed out. And we'd like to... And Chief would like to remove a couple of the windows and redecorate the whole thing, take the chair rail off. So I don't know. I can't answer that question. I'm sorry. I don't have... I can't give you a good number on it.
Ms. Majekis.
Sorry if I missed this. My brain's a little foggy. But in that initial $25,000 with the modular changing it all over there, is that including change in that wall? So that wall would look exactly the same?
No. No, we would redecorate. No, we would redecorate, and we would remove that.
We would just remove all that paneling, all that?
Yeah, we'll come up with it. You know, if you guys give us the okay, we will come up with a color scheme. We just don't have that now. Again, I don't want to have Deana running around doing things and then say, you know, we don't know if we're even going to do it.
Right.
So if you guys say we're going to do it, we'll come back with a color scheme for you and, you know, that'll match the brown rug, you know, whatever works with that.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that I was wrapping my head around the fact that when we change this to the modular, that wall would completely change.
Just so you know, my thing, that's number-one priority is to get rid of that wall.
Yeah. I remember you said that. Okay.
It might not bug you guys, but it just drives me crazy.
Yeah. I just want to make sure I got it right. Thank you.
Mr. Beanbuss.
So to what Mr. Gallagher was asking, which is a great question, that includes the furniture, right, for the 35, right? We said that for sure.
Yeah, all the furniture. But now, no seating. Because we never talked about seating. We're not going to talk about seating.
So when you say seating, you're talking about the seating that...
The chairs. We just used the chairs we have another time.
I get that. And to what Laura's point is, that wall is the biggest problem I got. It just needs to get upgraded and moved into...
All of it will come off, and we'll do it. We just don't know what's underneath. We assume drywall.
That's part of the 35, at least to get rid of the wall.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, I don't know. Again, it depends on how we cost it out. I don't... It's a reasonable question you're asking, and I understand where you're coming from. I don't know how we cost those things out internally.
So from my standpoint, for me, for my vote, it's like, I don't mind the modular. I get that. I don't mind using the same furniture. I mean, as far as chairs and that, I'd love to see the modular. I think that's where the whole world's going to anyway. And I want that wall taken care of, you know? Just upgrade the place a little bit, and then we can work our way through, you know, changing windows and all that for what the chief wants. And I think you could almost just leave these blinds up for what the, you know...
We'll make it work. You know, we'll make it work.
For now. But I would just be happy to get the modular furniture. We can use some of the same chairs and get rid of that wall. If you can do that for 35, thereabouts, I don't mind that. I think that's actually pretty good. But I want the wall to be gone. That's all I got.
Any other further points of discussion? So, Mr. Cannon, so what are you asking for tonight exactly?
Everything I presented, I'd like to be able to move forward.
The dollar amounts, I just said we're clarifying.
Well, $35,000 plus whatever the internal costs are.
I mean, $35,000 plus...
The internal cost. Again, I don't know how we cost those things out.
I'm looking for a cap.
$50,000 is what you gave us.
Okay.
It'll be less than that. I just don't know how much less.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Banjo?
I agree with Alderman Beanbuss. I'm perfectly fine with this. And the key features that they're talking about, that wall doesn't bug me as much, but I also like the idea of getting rid of the useless closet and the other cosmetic changes. So I'm in support of this.
Thank you.
Mr. Beanbuss, further comments?
I'm not going to comment.
Okay. Okay. Saw the hand up there, didn't know whether you had it, so.
So a couple of side things. When we do the remodel, we would like to include eventually some accessories for the room, like literature holders and some modern-looking recycling bins, not like ones we have at the curb out there. Things like that, to make it just look a little... Some extra signage in the hallway to get people down here, so people aren't lost in the hall figuring out where City Hall Chambers at. So eventually, those are things we'd like to put in. Those aren't major things, but they're things... We've had a major discussion among us about getting rid of the cow tables and running the cow meeting up in front, but we can talk about that another time.
Any further discussion? So, Mr. Crumstock, do you want to weigh in?
Nope. I'm just waiting for the straw vote of a cap of $50,000.
Mr. Cannon is asking for a straw vote of $50,000 to proceed that.
Yep.
So all in favor, raise your hands. Two in favor? Two in favor? Those opposed?
I can't support $50,000.
It fails for his...
I'm just concerned about the growing, growing outside of the 35, $50,000. Any of us know a construction project balloons?
Well, Mr. Cannon, there's only two folks.
Okay, that's fine. You know, that's democracy.
And at this stage, do you want to come back with a scaled-down plan?
I don't. No, I'm done.
Okay.
It's all yours. You guys can design it any way you want.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gallagher, did you have a comment?
No, I'd be willing to work with you. I would be happy to see that.
Why don't you take it all over?
I don't want to take it all over, but I think there's a solution.
Okay. We can discuss afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Deana.
All right. That moves us on to ambulance billing.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and City Council. Actually, in the next three items, I would make the same statement. Obviously, we are always looking for revenues. We're also looking at what our neighbors are doing. But the first one that we're talking about is ambulance billing. And we do look at this, what other municipalities have increased. We have not increased ours over 15 years. We are one of the lowest in the area. We do look at the Medicare/Medicaid items typically with their transports and some of the other incidentals. Obviously, with any discussion of revenues, we're very concerned about what the state of Illinois is actually doing. They took some of the municipal money last time, last minutes. They were talking about property tax freeze, and that goes back into additional revenue. Anywhere that we can find it is beneficial for the general fund specifically, specifically, obviously with pensions and general workings and operations. But also, we look at this as an opportunity. If we can increase our revenues, hopefully, we can also contribute additional money to local roads and to other capital items that we have done in the past. And obviously, the first item that we have, we're talking about ambulance billing. We know that certain people look at it differently than what we have looked at it over the years, and that's why we really haven't never touched it in all those years. There's really two components that you talk about. You talk about the transportation and obviously the mileage. When you look at what has happened in 2016 and 2017, the number of municipalities that have increased it, and again, ours is low, we felt that it's an opportunity to come back to the City Council, have this discussion at this point in time. We do believe the main thing that we see with many municipalities, they are increasing to 1,200, 1,500, and the 1,800, which is the current Medicare/Medicaid reimbursable amount that they're utilizing. As staff, we believe that the 1,500 per transportation is beneficial for this city. We also feel that that's in par with some of our neighbors at this point in time. When you look at the analysis that Andres actually did for us, and we do have a representative over here, that 1,500 is around that number, that most is in that halfway point, so we feel comfortable with that point in time. We caution the City Council with this discussion. Obviously, the numbers that we talk about are for a full year, and it also depends on how many runs we have and how many transports we have. So again, it's a revenue generator that we do see, that municipalities have been increasing over the years. We believe that it's time for the city of Rolling Meadows to increase this at this point in time. If the council does support us, and obviously, before I bring up the chief and deputy chief and obviously Finance Director Melissa Gallagher, we just want people to know that if there are additional questions, that's why we do have a lot of staff here, our recommendation is moving it up to the 1,500 per transport. That additional revenue, we hope, will help us in the 2018 budget, but then when we generate that money, we will look for the 2019 to utilize that money in 2019 for some of the other pieces, but also some of the other capital items that we have coming up. And this also goes back with the other two discussions that we're having. We're always looking at local roads. When can we actually increase or when can we put more money into it? And that's something that we do look at with this increase in general fund. Hopefully, we can siphon some of that, or not the best word for that, but reallocate some of that money back into specifically local roads and then take some pressure off some of those other pieces. I would love to tell you that I have a magic wand that I could find $500,000 for general fund, $500,000 for local roads, $500,000 for other capital items, but I don't. I think that this is a discussion that, long time, but at the same point in time, if you feel comfortable at the straw vote, then it does take an ordinance. After first reading and second reading, if ordinance does pass, Andres would be able to institute the new amounts, and hopefully by March, we would start receiving this additional revenue. So with that, I do bring up Chief Valentino and obviously Finance Director Melissa Gallagher, if they would like to give additional pieces. And when we did reach out to the private sector, they're typically running about $2,300 to $3,000 a run.
Thank you, Mr. Crumstock. Just to echo just a couple of points, we certainly are looking at pieces as we build for the 2019 budget year, and I think it's really important to understand that we are looking to diversify in the general fund in particular, but to also make sure that we're looking ahead to things such as local roads, or commitment to improving our roads. This diversification is a key one, it is something that other municipalities are doing at this point in time. It is also something that is a recovery effort, and we're going to hand it over in a minute to Andres Medical Billing, Pat Mannix, in just a moment, but it is something that is extremely important to look at our diversity of revenue stream, and then also to make sure that we're covering things that are also out there, and be in line with industry standards. So I'm going to kick it off and turn it over to Chief Valentino to say a few words before we introduce Pat.
Very well, thank you. So the overall impact fire-wise is negligible. This is typically, this is truly a financial impact. It's seizing an opportunity for revenue based on our fee. I need you to understand that the fee here is directly related to transports, and not where we would just go to help someone bandage their arms and take care of things. So this is more or less a user fee, and it is not taxed, there's zero impact on taxpayers here. This is not a tax hike, this has nothing to do with taxes, this is sheer a user. When someone calls 911, we transport them, there's a fixed fee for residents, non-residents, and just for a simple transport. All the associated training, capital outlays for ambulances for training is fixed on a given year, and we budget for that. So this is the opportunity to capture money from typically the PPO payers, and Mr. Mannix can explain that in detail on how we can capture that. It's either going in our general revenue pocket to be simplified, or into the insurance companies. So I'll turn it over to Pat Mannix from Andres Billing. We have a contract with Andres Medical Billing to do all of our medical billing.
Good evening, I'm Pat Mannix, Andres Medical Billing. We've been working with the city for about 12 years now in the ambulance billing space. We annually get together, at least annually, with Fire and Finance and talk about industry trends, standards, cost of services, things of that nature. And as they both spoke, this was an option that a lot of our services have taken upon themselves, the costs of services have escalated over time, and the city was far, far below with the reasonable customary standards that a lot of payers would pay out for these types of services. So we put together a couple of forecast options, talked about, again, what's going on in healthcare, the Affordable Care Act, things of that nature, and it seemed like a good time to present a revenue stream that the city really hasn't realized since we started working for you folks way back when. So if anybody has any specific questions about how ambulance billing works, I'd certainly be willing to answer any questions.
Yes, I have a couple. I'm sorry, the firefighters at the station house are probably chuckling because they've been to our house so many times. You take assignment, basically, when we send out a bill, so if it's, if you're charging $1,500 for transport, but the insurance company only pays 1,200, you still take the assignment, so there's no extra billing to the resident.
Correct, those parameters are set up by the city, and so how the follow-up, typically in a scenario like this, that there will be zero out-of-pocket expenses for residents, their tax dollars that they pay to fund the services would be considered 100% in payment. Non-resident events, you'd have to follow the parameters of the policies, so Medicare pays a certain amount, public aid pays a certain amount, but in the setup that we've talked about with Fire and Finance, that there'd be zero out-of-pocket expenses for city residents.
Okay. Any other questions for clarification before we move on to the discussion? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Gallagher.
What allows for the medical billing to charge a higher rate to the insurance companies or to Medicaid?
You're charging the same rate, it's just certain payers have certain contractual obligations. The state Medicaid programs pay a certain amount for certain levels of care. Medicare is a federal payer, so they'll pay deemed on what the federal rates are, but insurance companies don't have reasonable customary fees based on certain levels of care. Every provider is different. So it's again, just looking at what insurance companies would potentially pay, and again, looking at the cost to provide the services, those things all come into play. But again, as your billing vendor, I wouldn't have a suggested rate one way or the other. Our job is to show you what's happening with your neighbors. It's certainly becoming a practice to really look at the overall cost to provide the service and generate as much revenue as possible.
Okay, so it sounds more like it's a because you can, you will type of model, right? Because you can receive that type of revenue, you will bill to that capacity.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other? Mr. Cannon?
So could you tell me if, say you had an accident here, and a person lived out of town, and they had private insurance, how much would that person get charged?
Every policy is different, so the charge would be the same, it would be the $1,500 amount that was proposed.
And then we just, we, and you, would just accept whatever the insurance company pays then, and that would be paid in full?
For a resident.
How about for people who aren't residents?
Again, those policy parameters would be in place, so if the policy was 80/20, then the person would be responsible for the 20%.
So typically, Alderman Cannon, what happens is, in your scenario, someone's in an accident, we transport over, a bill is sent, so let's use right now the hypothetical recommendation of 1,500, we bill out the $1,500. The insurance company pays, let's say, 1,400, so that extra $100, typically Andres will come back to the chief and say, we only got a partial payment, we're the last $100, what would you like us to do? So they come back to the city and specifically say, do you want us to charge the individual? Do you want us to write it off? But if they don't get their full payment, they're coming back to the city and asking, what would you like us to do?
Okay, so, so I'm a little bit confused, so are we going to ask for $1,200 for transport, or are you asking us to pick one of the three?
We gave you the most scenarios, the 1,200, the 1,500, and the 1,800. 1,500 is our recommendation to go up to.
Okay, and how does that compare to Palatine?
Palatine actually just increased theirs, they do it a little bit, but they did it two-pronged, because they did it for the transport fee and their mileage fee. So they increased their mileage fee considerably, we're not talking about doing that, we're just doing the transport. And if I remember correctly, it was either $1,000 or $1,200.
We do it 240 customers, it's hard to keep them all straight.
That's why I didn't ask you, I wouldn't expect you to know, because I, you know, my daughter got transported from Palatine last year, or not, last year, in '16, because she broke her arm really bad, and they charged us $900. And then the insurance company paid part of that, but not all of it. And then they just let the rest of it go.
Right, and that's their parameters. Every time you set up a vendor, it's all the parameters that are, so again, whatever they get, now they went back to Palatine and said, would you write it off, and their parameter was obviously yes. The other thing is to understand is, whatever we charge, so specifically, let's use the hypothetical, the $1,500 that you increase it to, which is the staff recommendation, Palatine comes in here, and they do a transport, they have to charge our rates, so they can't be doing, so Arlington Heights, which already increased their rates higher than ours, if they do a transport from Rolling Meadows, they have to do the Rolling Meadows rate. So if we're in Palatine, we're using the Palatine rate or the Arlington Heights rate if we're doing a transport from their areas.
Okay, thank you.
Any other? Mr. Budmats?
What percentage of the transports are paid for with Medicare and what with private insurance?
The payer mix is somewhat roughly, 50% will be Medicare and public aid, about 35% would be private insurance, and then the remaining would be workman's comp or uninsured folks. I have all the statistics, I just don't have them with me.
Thank you, that's it.
Any other questions? So there's, you know, three recommendations, so just, so we're clarifying, are there any further questions on the staff recommendation for the three options? Okay. Seeing none, is the City Council comfortable with moving ahead for the staff recommendation of generating an additional $350,000? So let's take a straw vote, raise your hand.
In favor?
One, two, three, four, opposed. Four went forward, and three others did not vote, okay. So that being the case, is there support to move ahead with, to draft an ordinance? Let's have a straw, straw poll. One, two, three, four. You have direction from council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Obviously, as we said, the next two are sort of related, but let's start with the first one, which is natural gas tax. Obviously, Finance Director Melissa Gallagher is going to stay for this one, but we've had this discussion in the past when we did the electric tax, but also part of the discussion revolves that many more municipalities are starting to use natural gas where their local road fund. Specifically, I can use the example of Hoffman Estates, when they started needing more money, that's one of their, they did some bonding, they did their natural gas, they did some other pieces to put it in place with some of their other pieces. We do look at, again, with what's going on with the state, with even MFT overall, and some of the other pieces. This is another discussion that we have that to talk about with the City Council, but also having the discussion about what some of our other neighbors are, and that's where that four to five cents, and we're recommending the five cents per therm, natural gas, be put in place. But again, it all goes back into what range do, does the council actually feel about this, but also how it's actually calculated? And for most typical residents, between $20 and $50 annually, based on that 40, four cent to five cent per therm. But again, when we go through the presentation before I actually turn it over to Finance Director Melissa Gallagher, we just would like to know if you want us to continue with it. If there is support, then we do need to draft the ordinance. It does take NICOR a little more time to implement this. Typically, they tell us four to six months, once we are in process to do this. So this would be something that we would receive some money potentially in 2018, but it's really setting up for that 2019. With that, I turn that over to Finance Director Melissa Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. Crumstock. Tonight on natural gas, again, it continues the revenue discussion and revenue diversification. I think it's very clear right now that we have some external pressures from the state of Illinois in terms of revenue, and I think it's something that we need to look at closely and be very financially prudent thinking about it going forward. We obviously want to keep our commitment to local road funding and pension funding and other other commitments out there. With the fact that we've got state pressures coming up, we want to start the process and look at this in 2018, and then also continue the revenue discussion in 2019. We're not only looking at this type of revenue stream, but looking at other things such as the building permits, business licenses, and other kinds of things that will generate revenue, particularly to the general fund, but also to support our capital commitments. Right now, when we look back to 2009, the electric utility tax was something that was implemented and generates $1.3 million into the general fund annually. It is something that is always coupled with a natural gas tax. At the time of 2009, that was decided not to move ahead with the natural gas tax, but certainly, when you look at the research from other municipalities, they've always coupled it, where you've had an electric utility tax with a natural gas tax, because they go hand in hand. Generally, $1.3 million is generated, it is an electronic revenue, meaning that it's an extremely efficient revenue to the city. It takes finance not very long to get the payment in and to reconcile it. I'm going to give just an example and some feedback on vehicle stickers in general, just because it is something that Alderman Budmats had mentioned, he wanted to look at and discuss with the City Council. When we look at vehicle stickers, it is the month of June that they're renewed, they are renewed throughout the year, or purchased throughout the year. We do have a late purchase period in September as well, so it's not just the month of June, it is throughout the year. It is a very hectic, busy time at the front counter, I know many of you, I see you at the front counter purchasing your vehicle stickers, so you know how the lines are, you know how the calls are, the emails coming in, it's a very hectic time. What we consider a very inefficient tax, many municipalities are getting away from vehicle stickers for the fact that it is inefficient. It takes staff hours and hours to prepare, and then also in the entire month of June, your entire processing is all, pretty much you're doing that, plus your additional work. Why I mention it's inefficient is that you also have to spend a certain amount to achieve that certain amount, so we budget $500,000, it takes about $100,000, when you net all the expenses out, you're about a $400,000 revenue stream to the local road fund. I do mention that because there are other expenses, postage, also the police department expenses, ticketing, there are many other things that are included in there. And we're just mentioning that just to set the table for a discussion process, whether or not that's something that's decided on, or it's just as far as a replacement of vehicle stickers with a natural gas tax, or maybe some other type of revenue. Just thoughts to consider, because it is a very inefficient tax. There are many residents that are very, they're not very happy to purchase their vehicle sticker, let's put it that way. Again, when we did the research from the Northwest Municipal Conference and other surveys that we've done, municipalities have not only, again, coupled it with their electric utility tax, but they've also replaced vehicle stickers. Mr. Crumstock mentioned Hoffman Estates, I speak with the Finance Director every now and then over there, they mentioned that the natural gas tax is extremely efficient, it's similar to the electric utility tax, that you receive your revenue electronically and you reconcile, and that's it. They do dedicate that for roads in Hoffman Estates, and it has helped them tremendously. As we've mentioned, therm use is about one cent per therm, generates about $100,000 annually to the general, would be to the general fund if approved. Right now, when we look at our bills, it can vary, of course, but if you use an average home, let's say about 1,000 therms per year, somewhere about, about a $20 to $50 annual expense for this tax to a resident, just typical, just kind of doing some averages. What we're looking at again is to achieve revenue stability, particularly for the general fund, but also to generate additional revenue enhancements for roads and other areas. So we're looking at this for revenue discussion, and we will continue to look at other resources and revenues as well, not just the natural gas tax. So at this point, we did want to share our recommendation with a four to five cent per therm natural gas tax that would generate approximately $400,000 to $500,000. Again, it's council's decision, but it's something that, it's something that we could look at together and continue the discussion for the 2019 budget. But our goal would be to approve it for 2018, begin the tax, it does take about four to six months, thereabouts, from NICOR to implement, and then we can continue the discussion for 2019, but that staff is the recommendation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Melissa. Questions for clarification for what Melissa presented? Mr. Diestis?
What is the average cost to a resident for vehicle stickers right now?
I think average, again, I think most people are doing that to vehicles, so for non-senior, you're talking about that $60 to $70, depending when they walk in, but 60 is a good number for you.
And how many residents have one car, and how many residents have more than one car? I don't think you'll have that number, but I'd like to know that answer before I make a decision one way or another. If 50% have one car, and 50% have more than one car, people are going to be paying a lot more money. My next question is, you said, based on 1,000 therms, that charge is $20 to $50, why is that? And can we find out therm usage currently, so we can get a better number?
We sure can. That was just off of, actually, I used my bill as an example, but we definitely can.
If I can get that number, and are you proposing this in lieu of and getting rid of vehicle stickers? Or is this going to be in addition to vehicle stickers?
Our thought process, Mr. Diestis, was to implement, to begin it in 2018, with the process of going through to the general fund as a credit, and to look at and discuss, continue the discussion with the City Council for the 2019 budget, whether or not it is an option to replace vehicle stickers, or continue it for some other dedicated source like local roads, or perhaps keep a split, but it's certainly a City Council's decision. But at this point, it would be to start it in 2018 and continue to 2019, with the thought process of maybe replacing vehicle stickers with that tax.
And then my final question at this point is, and you sort of answered it, but didn't, if we do something like this, which I'm not in favor of at this point, are we going to dedicate this extra money to road funds? Because if you, right now, all the vehicle sticker money goes to road funds. If we eliminate vehicle stickers, and you're anticipating this to generate as much as stickers do, then this money should theoretically be dedicated exclusively to road fund?
Yes.
And not general fund?
That would be the direction of the council.
Yes.
Well, I just heard general fund.
Right, but the council can determine where they, if they want general fund, or they want it to go into road fund.
So I'm not prepared to make any decisions or make any votes tonight, other than the negative, because we don't have enough information at this point, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Diestis?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we have talked about this in the past, I'm not real excited about it, that doesn't necessarily mean I'm against it. I guess the other comment I would make, because of the discussion we're having, you know, I've only been on the council for six years, and you know, every year, we have discussion about stickers at some level, you know, and as a city, we've, from my perspective, we've done little to make ourselves more efficient in the distribution of stickers. And I think there's a number of things that we've talked about in the past that we just refused to implement, and I would really ask us to strongly look at that until we decide to get rid of them. If you go up to Wisconsin, you can win the most grocery stores, and they have a nice little kiosk right there, you put your card in, and it pushes out a sticker for you. No one even touches the thing. You know, the other, the other thing we could do is to stop the mad rush in June, is to put, you know, if you do them by mail, you get them at the same price, if you walk in, it costs you an extra $5, or something like that, it doesn't have to be that, but we just continue to do it the same way, and I can appreciate the fact that staff gets overwhelmed in December and June, but let's do something to change that then. We're going to have them for at least this next June, do something different. If you don't like my idea, I'm fine with that, just do something different, though. Don't keep on doing it the same way, and experience all that frustration and have all the employees angry because of the stuff they got to do, or split it somehow, where you do part of the city one month and the other, you know, the other part of the city the other month, but do something different is all I'm asking, asking to at least consider anyhow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Mr. Badger?
Thank you, Mayor. This kind of turned into a vehicle sticker discussion, I agree with everything Alderman Cannon said about, about trying to streamline the process and take out staff members from the actual physical distribution of those. I was thinking back to when Tollway doubled their tolls, if you had a I-Pass, they stayed the same, though. So there's more to be said about that, and this isn't the So there's more to be said about that, and this isn't the topic. The topic of this natural gas tax doesn't excite me, just because I'm comfortable with the vehicle sticker. That's truly a use tax. If you have a car, you're on the roads, you're using the roads, wear and tear, et cetera, et cetera, and you're paying that. Natural gas is just a vehicle of ginning up more money. And I understand what we're getting at, we're trying to build up our income. The argument that we need to be ahead of the state doesn't work with me, just because the state's so erratic. I don't want to try to, I don't want to try to anticipate the craziness that comes out of Springfield. So on some level, I'm just not worried about what they're going to do. Because if you do stay up late at night worrying about what Springfield's going to do, well, I...
You'll never go to sleep?
Yes, you'd never go to sleep. So that just doesn't get me anywhere. That being said, I'm just not a fan of the natural gas tax at this point. I think if the state did something crazy, we could react. It is nice to know that it'd be, a reaction time would be padded by four to six months, as Ms. Gallagher said, because it takes time for the utility to set this up for a city. So I am glad she mentioned that. It's something I'll consider down the road. But at this point, I'm not, I'm not going to be in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further topics? I mean, further discussion on the topic? Mr. Budmats, sir.
So the reason why I'm in support of this tax...
Mr. Bud, thank you.
The reason why I would be in support of this tax, instead of the wheel tax, and it would only be instead of the wheel tax, and not in addition to the wheel tax, is that there are many people who come into Rolling Meadows, use our roads every day, and pay nothing on the wheel tax. They come into office buildings, wherever, drive off of the tollway, unless they buy the odd tank of gas at a Rolling Meadows gas station, they pay nothing for our roads. But they all enjoy the warmth provided by the building that they're working in, and therefore, whoever is paying to heat that building would in fact pay a portion of that money in tax to us, that we would then in fact be able to repair those roads with. So I think that it would distribute the tax burden across all of the users of the road equally, and not just the citizens who happen to house their vehicles in garages in this town. So I think that it's a fairer tax. I did some, little bit of investigation. The average house on grouse would pay about $37 a year for this tax. And if they have one vehicle, they're paying 30 now. If they have two, they're paying 60. So most people have two vehicles, chances are. They are going to save money by this. Obviously, it's going to cost business owners more, large business owners. Smaller business owners, not so much. I mean, I did this with my own private business, I figured it out in Schaumburg. Based on the number of vehicles that I have, and my vehicles in Schaumburg, if I were to pay it, I would pay less than paying the stickers. So even with an industrial building, using a larger amount of gas to heat a larger space, it would still be a savings. It would be a savings in my own house as well. So I really think that it would be a net savings to the average user in the city, and it would be a much more efficient way to collect $500,000, rather than spending $100,000 to collect $500,000. It's just almost, it's a terrible burden to place on police officers, to become revenue agents at that point. They have a negative impact and a negative view when they're looked at by the community, because everybody looks at a police officer as a guy who's there to collect money on behalf of the system, rather than a friend who's there to help when they need help, or to solve a problem. That's it.
Thank you. Further discussion? Well...
If I can just interject, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
We could, I know we have several council discussion items here. We could bring back information to the city council to address Alderman Diestis's questions and information, and get data back to the city council for further discussion.
You read my mind, because Mr. Diestis brought up several good points tonight, and he had several questions. Mr. Budmats has brought up some information. So I'm going to ask for a straw vote for staff to come back with more information, based on the questions that are here tonight, and any questions that any of the Alderman may have. So just a straw vote for more information from staff on the subject.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you.
I do have a question. If we were to abide by the condition to drop one, if we enact another, I'd want to know what the timeline of, what a convenient timeline to discontinue vehicle stickers would be.
I agree. I think, I think what we're trying to say is, if we did it now, 2019, there would be no stickers. So right now, no matter what, 2018, we're still doing vehicle stickers. So your timeline is, again, whenever you make that decision, the four to six months for that to be implemented, and then 2019, if you're saying that flat out, then there would be nothing. So you can make the announcement, hopefully, in the budget process of what you're doing.
And based on the fact that it takes three to six months for this to ramp up, if we approve this in the first or the second quarter of the year, it's not, there's very limited effect in the summer months. Nobody's heating their houses in the summer, so, you know, it won't really become an issue until December.
And then, one other thought is, Mr. Diestis wanted to make sure that it got funded to roads, correct? So maybe, and the point I want to make is, that when you come back with the information, show how that would affect the road fund, based on this revenue.
Yeah, that's all part of the thing, because he did ask about number of cars, by household, the term, therm usage and dedication that we understand his budget.
Correct. I just want to make sure his points were covered, so, thank you.
Thank you.
This brings us to video gambling. Mr.?
Mr. Mayor, if I may. I'd like to ask that we postpone the conversation on video gaming. It's come to my attention that several businesses in the city have brought this subject up to the Chamber of Commerce, and that the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce will be reviewing this, and having discussion on this exact subject next week, the 23rd, and maybe coming to city council with either a recommendation, or not coming to city council at all. So I think it's premature for the city, at this point in time, to make a decision on it, before we've heard from what several businesses and the Board of Directors of the Chamber are interested in. I believe that we need to support our businesses. I've had several, several means more than two, but less than five businesses contact me about this over the last so many years. And I know our city manager has had inquiries about this, from potential restaurants and/or lounges, or restaurant lounges, over the last so many years. So I would respectfully request we pull this until we hear the recommendation, or no recommendation, from the Chamber of Commerce. Because I believe that we need to support our businesses, and if they come back saying they need help, or this is a possibility, then I think we need to, we look at it in a different way. But it's just, I'm respectfully requesting we pull this.
So it's your motion to postpone?
Well, I don't think there is a motion in a Cow meeting, but, yes. Take a straw vote to postpone.
Straw vote to postpone it to the Cow meeting in February.
Correct.
All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. Seven. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the EAB report. I see Fred sprinting up here.
Sprinting?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, as he walks up to the thing. Obviously, this is an idea that we've been talking about for years. Last time that I get to say the little boogers really cost the city of Rolling Meadows, as well as other municipalities in the area. But we want to give you final results on the Emerald Ash Bore. What did it actually do to the city of Rolling Meadows? How much money was actually spent? This is a follow-up, as we committed to the city councils in the past, what we've done, and where we sit. And obviously, there are a few that we're still treating. But with that, that's my quick intro on Emerald Ash Bore.
Thank you, Barry. This is primarily a statistical report, both on Emerald Ash Bore and on our tree maintenance needs and projections. In summary, through the end of 2017, the Emerald Ash Bore removal of approximately 2,000 ash trees, which is about 20% of the city's parkway trees, that started in 2011. The forestry crew in Public Works removed about 1,050 trees. Contract crews, 750 trees. The total costs, as we calculated, and these aren't audited by any means, but just in terms of using our labor man-hour reports, about $1,100,000 in in-house Public Works costs, $750,000 in equipment costs that we charged to ourselves, $103,000 in disposal fees, treatment costs, which are the roughly 35 trees that we treat downtown, and the stump grinder removal. For contractual tree removals, it was just under $450,000, and then a similar $450,000 in contractual tree planting costs over the last six years. We did replace the 1,800 removals with about 2,100 replacements. That number is larger, because in some parkways, it was warranted to put two trees in, rather than one, because there is either a large gap, or a tree that had been removed earlier, a number of different reasons why that number is higher. We also planted smaller trees, that was decided on several years ago to save money, to use inch-and-a-half trees, rather than the two-and-a-half-inch trees that we had used prior to that. So are there any questions with regards to the Emerald Ash Bore program? As we wrap that up, we still estimate that there's probably about 100 trees in the city parkways, and certainly numerous ash trees in residential backyards that we're not responsible for, but the 100 roughly that we are responsible for, we'll keep an eye on those. Residents have chosen in some locations to treat them themselves. If they continue to do that, at least what we've seen here and in other communities is that it is effective, and has retarded the disease, and very successful. We've only lost, I believe, maybe two or three of our trees in the downtown parkway areas that were treated, and still have about 35 of them that are still doing quite well at this time.
So does anyone have any questions for clarification? Mr. Banjoo.
Thank you, Mayor. Fred, this was a great report, and thank you. I remember when I first got on council, this was a big deal, because, number one, we were quite poor at the time, and this was the last thing we needed, was to spend extra money. And you convinced us of the sense of urgency, so we, I think reluctantly, spent the money. I remember I lost a vote, because I felt bad that we were replacing these trees with one-inch whips, rather than the much more expensive two-inch trees. And I just remember those one-inch trees looked like Charlie Brown's Christmas tree. But it was one of the best losses, I think. I got creamed on the vote, I remember. But you later came back and told us that the one-inch trees actually grew faster than the two-inch trees, because you're taking a larger tree, and it stunts its growth for a while before it takes off. And the one-inch trees had no such problem, and they took off. So again, great report, and this was painful, and it has been painful for the last several years, but it's something we had to tackle, and it's hopefully over now. I also wanted to thank, I think it's Graham, who's our tree guy, for, you know, having that list of different species, because now, instead of doing all elms, like they did back in the day, before Dutch elm disease wiped those out, which were replaced by ash trees, which got wiped out by Barry's little boogers.
It weren't personally mine.
Right, right, good point. I would suggest, if possible, for tree nerds out there, who want to, I think, upgrade their parkway trees, if we could have a tiled page on our Public Works website that says, "This is this tree, this is a Ginkgo tree, this is a such and such." I've been passing trees on the parkway, that I like the look of them, I would like one myself. I'm not a tree guy, so I don't know what it is. So it would be nice if the species that we offer are represented with a picture of an actual, you know, mature tree, with maybe an inset of a leaf. Just a suggestion. But yeah, it's great what we've done, and, you know, when these whips grow up in 15, 20 years, I think it's going to be, the diversity's going to be amazing, and we won't have this problem with pests or diseases again, now that we've diversified.
Yeah, we are providing roughly 20 different species for residents to choose, and again, it's always subject to availability, but we've discussed putting those out there. We certainly have provided that to residents that had to pick from trees, and anecdotally, I've had a few residents come into Public Works over the years, and it was like the most difficult decision in their life, to try to decide what type of tree they wanted. Sometimes it might be that there's too many choices, but that's what we provide, and we do that for a reason, to try to diversify the forest and avoid this type of situation from killing that percentage of trees, at roughly 20%.
And I would also make the comment, I guess it's more of a self-plug for the city of Rolling Meadows, we do have a 50-50 program, that anybody can really sign up on their parkway trees, too.
For a larger tree, if they so desire, but yeah, I had to see it to believe it myself, but the smaller trees, certainly after two or three years, were right where the larger two, two-and-a-half-inch would have been. So it took a few more years, but I think it's been overall satisfactory to the majority of residents.
Mr. Diestis?
Thank you. Fred, great report, but I'm looking at it a little differently, saying, now that this is done, and we have spent, by my looks here, about $3 million. How are we going, are we going to save that moving ahead, or are we spending it on something We spent $450 on tree planting, I know we don't spend that every year now, and this is over the course of three or four years, I believe. You've got $1 million in labor costs. So that means something wasn't getting done. So what more can we do moving forward? I just, like I said, I just look at it differently. It's not like I'm expecting answers from you right now, other than, there's a whole lot of money we spent on this one thing. How are we going to create action plans for us?
Capitalize on that.
Thank you, to capitalize on this moving forward.
Yeah, and part of that, we can say, is some of it was now reallocation, because we stopped some of our other tree trimming and pruning, and some of our other pieces were now coming back into that. Part of that was reallocation back into some of the pension programs, but there have been some reallocations that we've had to do, because we had to defer a bunch, and now we're coming back into our normal standards. And that's my quick answer, and I know Fred's shaking his head, he has more.
Yeah, Barry is correct, from a Public Works operations standpoint, that we did defer and not trim as many trees over the last several years as we would have otherwise recommended or liked to. Some of that, we're proposing in the rest of this report, to get back to doing that, to supplement the contractual work in trimming trees. We also have to point out that all those trees that we planted and replaced, the city forester points out to me that, yeah, we can't just let them be for five, 10 years, that we need to do what he calls "training pruning" on them, to get them to grow properly. So Public Works staff will take a lot more of an active role in that, in addition to picking up with our, what we call block trimming, or the tree trimming that is scheduled work on our part. And we hope that to increase that scheduled trimming, block trimming, we will be able to cut back on the resident requests for trimming, because we've seen up to 500 requests from residents just throughout the city. Gee, my, I got a limb that's hanging over the sidewalk, or my driveway, or I just want it trimmed. If we can get into a five-year cycle, we think that we can certainly be much more efficient by minimizing the requests.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Questions? Well, after all is said and done, do I have a motion to adjourn? So move second? All in favor?
Aye.
We're out of here.
Thank you.